Good evening. Welcome. We work from an agenda. Normally when I've got something that comes to the town or myself, we're going to put together the agenda. Otherwise it will be tabled to the next meeting and Dave brought that you would be coming in and wanted to chat with us. First order of business are the minutes from our last meeting in December. Anybody have any thoughts, comments? Five of us. Approval of the last minute. Uh, let's see. Uh, let's see here. Oh, just a presentation. Any comments, thoughts, additions, changes? Okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move.
Okay, Dave seconded?
I seconded.
Okay. Dave G. and Drew, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it.
Happy New Year.
You're up next?
Um, good evening. Um, how are you doing, Carl County Government? Comprehensive planning. The update from where we have are the following. Water and sewer master plan right now. The 2024 reform amendment is still in process. The Board of Carroll County Commissioners approve all the amendments on February 13th. And all the information will be sent to the Rural Department of the Environment for final review and approval. The housing study has been completed and it has been published on our website. It is readily available in PDF format. If you would like for me to email you a copy of it, I'd be more than glad to do so, which I will do. Tomorrow in the morning I'll email you a PDF copy of that housing study so you have it for your reference. Any questions regarding the findings or the housing study in general? You can reach out to my colleague Ms. Tiffany Fossette at tfossette@carrollcountymd.gov. And if needed be, you can also copy me on that email. When it comes to the master plan, it's, we just finalized our series of open house events that were held across Carroll County. This is the initial phase of outreach so that we obtain feedback from that community. That community's engaged in giving us their opinions, their thoughts on what Carroll County, how Carroll County is going to look like in the next 10 years. The findings for those results will be brought forth to the Commissioners and once approved, they will also be published on the master plan website, which is carroll2035.org. In general, just a reminder, anything regarding annexations is being handled by me. You can reach out to me either through email or my phone. My, I prefer email as faster as jpho at carrollcountymd.gov. I'll be more than glad to assist you. Animal report currently is being worked or processed by Ms. Tiffany Fossette and myself. In regards to new Windsor, that's one of the pending items that we have, understand. We receive a draft, but we still pending that certification of the document that was emailed. And those are all the updates that I have so far.
I got an email. My laptop died. So it's only two months old. So everything's out there. And so I'm using another laptop. So when I sent out for the agenda this week, there was an email that he said they sent me something. So the draft I haven't seen yet. So I think that's something we end up vote, we have to vote for, vote on here and then pass along. So what I'll do is I'll do it through an email. But I never got the letter, so I didn't, and I haven't seen anything. Anyway, it's wonderful when you're working, you have IT support at work, that you can go to somebody. Trying to get something solved on there is a bit of a challenge. And I've never had to do that.
Oh, amazing. One of the downsides of retirement.
Oh, my God. So I am 100% to hold up on that and I will find out where it is. I'll send it around to everybody via email. We've done this before for this.
Yeah, for this purpose.
We can do an email kind of a space on.
Thank you.
And this is a, you're going to hang around for the whole meeting? Okay. What I'm running back there now is our first draft of the comprehensive plan. And I know I said the last time we were together, I was going to reach out to you.
And there were some items.
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is I've got it marked in that plan that's copied right now so that everybody can have a hard copy to look at. I'm going to make a copy of the charts that are specifically were done by Carroll County Planning when we last did this. And I'll put that in your hand and then we can chat about whether you can either, you're going to be able to do it for us or point me in a direction of who to talk to at Carroll County. And again, I know you're the fourth person we work with from the county. And when we went through this process the last time, we had, we essentially followed the Carroll County planner on this. So we've had, this has been very different, the hands off. So I'm just looking for some direction, guidance, advice. This is my retirement job now to try to get this thing pushed.
Once I have those, I'll.
So I'll put that in your hand so you can just look at it and say, I don't know how to do that. That's fine. You can point me in a direction to somebody else.
What I will do is once you hand over the copy tomorrow, I'll go over it with Ms. Mary Lane.
Okay.
The Bureau Chief and Ms. Daphne Daly.
Great.
And we'll reach out to you, give you guidance on how to go forward with the pending items.
And I will also want the copy, I'll give you, I'll put my cell phone number. So that way we can for sure be able to talk. Great, thanks. Okay, thank you Javier. All right. Dave, what do you got for us?
Yeah, a couple of things that I thought I'd bring up for the Planning Commission that the Town Council, we are working on our FY '26 budget for the town. Gary starts that in about January and we continuously work that. It'll be approved in probably early May and goes into effect in July 1st. So it's a, it's a good budget process where we take a look at everything and our budget continues to increase for the town. And we're able to provide the services and continue on with the staff that we have and the equipment that we need. And we've been able to do that for the last several years. I guess eight years without a tax increase. There was a proposal and discussion this year to raise the property tax rate. And we did have a spirited discussion on that. But I think the majority of the council felt that was not the time to, to raise property taxes considering everything that's going on everywhere, including inflation and all the other things. We do have money in reserves for the town. We are not in any kind of position where we need to do that today. Although, as you can imagine, everything does cost more to get done. So we cannot continue down the same path forever. But I think doing due diligence will, will do that when we, when we actually need to do that. We are working on a water and sewer rate adjustment. It's not to change the cost of water and sewer for the people, but we're doing a, we're looking at doing a tiered system so that heavy users of water will pay more for the water than, than it is kind of a fair share right now. Everybody pays a base and then you pay a smaller amount for water that you use. But doesn't really take into consideration the large water users, the amount of chemicals and everything else that are used. So we're going to most likely be lowering the base rates and raising the price of per gallon water. For most people, they'll see a little bit of an, a little bit of a decrease. And larger users will see a little bit of an increase. However, the benefit of doing this will allow homeowners to control their bill a little bit by saving water. So if you save some water right now, you will see that in your bill. Since the, the cost of the water, every thousand gallons will have a, you know, a set price. So if you save a thousand gallons, you'll knock $10 off your bill. And you know, you extrapolate that over the quarter and the year, you have an opportunity to save some money on your water bill by conservation efforts. So we'll, we'll be talking more about that, but I think we're getting close to, to putting that into effect. It probably won't go into effect till the beginning of the fiscal year as well, but.
July, July.
July 1st, yes. Still working on our Maryland. Yes.
Is it still going to be quarterly?
So the, the bills are still going out quarterly, but we are working on a new bill format. So it'll be a, not just the card that you receive today. I think it's going to be more of a folded bill and it's going to have three tear offs that you can, with the monthly fee. So it'll have your quarterly fee, which you can pay in whole, but it'll also have kind of tear off coupons that you can monthly pay. So we're, we're, you know, we've been looking at monthly bills, trying to send them out and do that. There's a lot of cost to that postage and everything. It's, it's man hours. So as an interim right now, we're looking at this different billing format and seeing if that will help residents that want to go on to that. You know, we've always been able to pay monthly for those that wanted to do that, but it's not as in your face with the old bills as this, this will be. So we're, we're hoping that that will help.
Dave, is there an online option of like direct?
Absolutely, yes. Yes, there is. You can certainly pay your bill.
Dave, is that a possible decrease in the base rate? That's just for the water, not the sewer.
Water and sewer base rates, water and sewer base rates will, will go down and the price of per gallon will go up. So most people, like I said, will see a small, depending on where your threshold is, 10,000, 20,000, 30,000 gallons a month, what you use, you will see probably a small decrease in your water bill. However, if you conserve water, you can control that.
And the base amount of water gallons per, is, will stay the same?
The base, the base rates are not tied to the gallon. They're tied to the hookup and they will, they will go down and everybody will have that base rate, yes.
But the whole idea of this is that this is not a revenue generator. It's going to be revenue neutral, as close as you can come to.
Yes, they mean the, the, the whole water and sewer system needs to be self sustaining. So the water and sewer system have to pay for themselves. But what this will do is allow more control for our residents through conservation to, to lower their water bill. And for those residents or customers, businesses, whatever that we have that are high users, that cost more to produce that water, they're going to pay more. Maryland 31 Streetscape, we are involved in monthly reviews of the project. So every month, the mayor, Tom Manager Di and myself, we phone in to the Maryland Streetscape project to make sure that it's continuing on. And, and it is continuing on slowly but surely. Mayor Rup put on the table that we wanted to extend the sidewalk all the way down to 711. As you know, it stops a little past Blue Ridge or maybe hits Spore Line and then it does not go around the bend to 711. And we've been pushing that and we've got a lot of no's, we can't do it. But he's put it on the table that, that we, we need to have that. There was a, a proposal from them, you know, to put a crosswalk at Blue Ridge and you would cross to the other side and then walk down the other side and then cross back over to 711. And of course, there's no sidewalk in front of the Springdale Prep School there to begin with. So I guess you're supposed to go up in their parking lot and around. And, and you know how that's going to work anyway. You know, somebody is going to, you know, go around the barn to get, so they're just going to walk down the street. So that's on the, that's on our radar as well, that we're, we're pushing that. And we got word at the last meeting that they're going to repave 31 from the railroad tracks all the way up to, it looks like the entrance of Snaider Summit. And they're going to be doing a, I think a shallow mill and overlay of that. That's not supposed to be our final from the project, you know, tearing up the streets and doing it properly. But because the roads are in pretty rough shape right now, they're supposed to come in and do that. And they have several projects on the books right now that they're working on. And I think ours is supposed to be started by June. Where I think we're, we're after one other job that's supposed to be done the end of May. And then they're going to do ours from the railroad tracks to Snaider Summit.
Is there going to be any, any kind of announcement other than at the Town Council about that? Any kind of session for the public?
For the repaving of the road? No, that's just going to be the state coming in and repaving the state highway.
So you'll get all the grief when they go through the walls, the sidewalks.
Well, this is not, this is, this.
I understand.
Yeah, this is not the Streetscape project. This is, you know. Yeah, that's what I would have gone. Gary made sure, he asked several times during that meeting that, hey, this is not going to be our final pave job for, you know, because you're right, we're supposed to be digging up, putting new bases in, we're supposed to, you know, the sidewalks and all that. So this is, yes.
This is a comment or a thought because I know I'm not a part of that and I wasn't at the Town Council meeting. But you know, people will always write.
Sure.
Might be of some value other than just at the meeting if maybe when the next water bill goes out or something like that. Just obviously it'll be in the file, mayor's quarterly reports.
It will, I, I imagine there may even be a, a letter sent out to, to the residents because they'll, you know, there's going to be traffic and things like that issues. So yeah, that, it'll be communicated, but I understand people are going to be concerned about it and, and I am as well. We're spending money, you know, that we're going to dig back up. But that's kind of the way the, the state operates and, you know, the way it goes. And as fast as our Streetscape project's been going, who knows how long that pavement will be there, so unfortunately. All right, that was it.
Well, thanks.
You're welcome.
And since I understand you were at the meeting, because our next agenda item is, I call it a contraction request, which I, which I, Dave mentioned to me that, and I'm not sure who's Phil. So there you have, okay. I'm sorry, you're.
Joe.
Joe, okay. So we have Phil and Joe and Snyder's?
Yep.
Okay. And I heard that you had an informal meeting with Dave and Neil.
And Neil.
To talk about this, okay? And looking for how to proceed with this and it was suggested that you come to the Planning Commission.
Correct.
To talk. So what I would ask is if you could, and I don't see any lights on and I did not get any feedback, but I'm assuming that we are being, Carroll Media Center is filming. If you want to bring the chair and sit here.
Yeah.
So that way it would be sure to catch your voice.
I don't seem to pick up. Hi, everybody. I want to, I want to thank you very much for allowing us to come and talk with you this evening. This is something that's been in the works for over a year. Neil and I met, I can't remember, might've been June of '24, down on the other side of Lampert Avenue there. And does everybody have a copy of this? Okay. So this is a conceptual plan. Probably the first thing I need to do is make sure everybody is aware of where the properties are that we're talking about. So right, right now, we have, there's three properties or three, three parcels that we're talking about.
Javier, if you want to take one of those to look at.
Yeah.
Oh, you have one? Okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you have one. Okay, sorry.
The, the whole farm was one parcel up to about three years ago and then we subdivided it off into three parcels. Two of the parcels are up on top of the hill next to where the water tank is, the town water tank. Then the third parcel are my parents' home farm there. That, that's down on the bottom of the hill. As you come out 31, you take the first lane to the left. It's the farmhouse that sits there. But there's also about 18 acres, a part of that parcel that is on the other side of the railroad tracks that butts up to Snaider Summit and then butts up to some, some ground that my parents sold to the town years ago where they currently have a well. They currently have a well there on that property. So currently, according to the, the master plan, all three parcels that we're talking about are in the growth area. Okay. So what, what our proposal is here, and I have it in, in two phases. As part of the first phase, the three, we are asking that the three parcels be taken out of the growth area by the town as well as I think Michelle had to help me out with this, but JP told me there's also a sewer or utilities area too.
There is an easement through there, candidly. I'm not 100% sure of like what foot this is all in. But yeah, there, there is some, some land that the town already has an, an interest of sorts in.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, we're, we're requesting that the town take those three parcels out of the growth area. Number one, it's not conducive for development. And number two, we want to have in the future, it might be way in the future now, we want to have those three parcels available to sell the easements off for ag preservation. Okay, that, that's our goal. Now, let's talk about the 18, I think it's 18.2 acres total. I'm sorry.
This is, this is an old, but this is our current GAB. So.
We're talking about this brown area right here.
Okay.
And then on, on here, this other area right in here across the railroad tracks.
Okay, so are we talking all this is, I mean, now again, this is, this is.
No, no, this, this would be, it would be.
Up to that line.
Yeah, that line. It's almost like a, like a odd triangle.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So let's talk about that, that area across the railroad tracks. It's a total of, it's a total of, and that would be the last page in your pamphlet, a book. It's a total of roughly 18 acres. And what we are, what, what we're proposing is if the town agrees to, to remove us from the growth area, those three parcels, as well as, I don't think there's much, according to what JP told me at our ag preservation meeting, that really the town holds the, the town holds the key. If the town wants it out of the growth area, then it will come out of the growth area. The county really can't say much about it. Yeah, so. I'm sorry, JP's the ag preservation person at the county. JP Smith?
JP Smith.
Oh, everybody.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I also.
Parker Smith's son.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'm also on the board, the ag preservation board for the county. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty versed on the, on the preservation program. But anyway, those, those 18 acres, 11.8 of those acres, we are willing to donate to the town. Okay, as part of this process. Those 11.8 acres or 11.6 acres, eight acres, I'm sorry. We, I talked with Neil about it and I think his first thought was, you know, if we, if we donated those 11 acres, 11.8 acres, it could be an area of open space for the town. Potentially, for, this is me, this is my thinking. It could potentially be something similar to what Union Bridge has across from, from Dollar General. Some kind of a pathway, a park, you know, for people to walk, put a walking path there. Maybe down the road, the town can get a grant to be able.
We do love a grant.
You know, to do that type of thing. But those 11.8 acres would become the town, under the town ownership completely and wholly. Okay? The only thing that we would like the option of is if it becomes a park, is to name the park after maybe one of my descendants. You know, or name the park, you know, in conjunction with the town, we would come up with something. But I'm, I'm thinking about, I have, I have a great grandfather, Senator Snaider, who was, I know Drew's done some, some research on that, who's been very, was very active in, in the community at the beginning of the, the fire company and so forth. So anyway, that, those are our thoughts. The other thing that we would like consideration on, and I'm very close friends with the condens, but if the condens would ever give up the rental of the town farm, Snaider Farms would be interested in leasing that property. Okay? From the town to become part of our farming operation. Okay? So that is, that's where we are with the first phase. So this would be, this phase would be a, a complete donation. And Michelle Boblin said if you have any questions on this, to call him. Because he's the one that we're working with.
He's the man.
So now, let me, let me talk about phase two. And I know, I don't know how in-depth your discussions are with water, but there probably is a pretty good chance that there could be some substantial water on that parcel. We would be willing to let the town conduct a one-year water study. And at the end of that study, if there was found to be quite a bit of water under there, then, and they came back and said, yeah, we're very interested because this parcel has a lot of water, then we would, the water rights to us would be worth $200,000.
Can I just interrupt you, make sure I understand you? This is on the 11.8 and the 6.7 that add up.
The 11.
Just on the 11, okay.
Yeah, just on the 11.8.
Make sure I understand.
So that's a donation with a condition?
Well, there's no condition. The, the donation would happen regardless if there's water there or not. Okay? But what I'm saying is if there's, if there is water there and you decide, hey, you know, we can put a well here. My understanding is the well on Lampert Avenue is 50 gallons a minute. So, you know, there could be potential there for water. So my understand, and what I'm proposing is if there is water under there or if you choose not to do the water story, the water study, that's okay too. But we would, we would retain the water rights for the property.
Under both circumstances, as part of the donation, you would retain the water rights?
Okay. As you may, even if there's a lot of water there, you say, we don't want to do it now. And we may be able to sell it to you down the road. So we would retain the water rights on the property. Okay? So that would be written into the deed. If for some reason there was a lot of water under there and you said, hey, we, we want to move forward with this, you know, we would be willing to finance the water rights at $200,000, 5% interest for 15 years. I know that's a lot of what ifs, but I'm, I'm presenting this as a conceptual plan, just so I'm, I'm laying everything out on the table for you guys. According to my calculations, and this is my mathematical mind, I guess, but based on your current rate at a 50 gallon a minute well, in two years, you would have that 200,000 paid off. 100 gallon a minute well, it'd be a little over one year.
Same gallon.
They probably wouldn't want to do it. You know, so.
As you say, there is a well on there.
The town owns a well on Lampert Ave, no, no, not on this property. Yeah, yeah, the town owns that.
At the end of Hillside to the right.
At the end of Hillside, to the right.
But regardless, even if it becomes just a donation, it's definitely going to benefit the town. There'll be eleven point eight acres that could possibly be used as a walking trail, as a nature trail, or however you wanted to look at it.
So, the mayor called me for the meeting that he had with Phil, and Mark was traveling at that time. So, I was able to pop up to the meeting and heard this, this already. So, you know, we recommended to come to the planning commission first, because obviously, we have to discuss and talk about removing the three parcels from the growth area boundary first, before this stuff gets kicked off. What is that? Not zoned now or anything, but is that, like, considered wetlands, floodplain, the eleven point eight?
Well, that's not in town. That's in the county, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, that's in the county.
Yeah, it's in the county.
Yeah, it's just outside of.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what it's on.
I mean, honestly.
Is it zoned ag?
It's, it's been pasture for as long as I've been around, you know, as long as I've been alive, it's been pasture. It's been the last twenty years, it's just been sitting there. I mean, I have a feeling, based on my limited knowledge of wetlands, but I would say probably a pretty good chance that it is a wetland.
But it's probably zoned ag, I would guess.
Conservation.
I don't think there's a lot of conservation out in that part of the world.
Do you think it was cleared at one point? Did you guys farm there?
I had it in pasture. I went back, I went back on Google Earth. I got back into the eighties on Google Earth. And back then, that whole area was clear. When I was, when I, when I was living there, and of course Joey and I grew up there, but when we were living there, we had cattle. I mean, we ran cattle in there for many years until, I would say, probably till nineteen ninety. Nineteen ninety, ninety-five is when we stopped running cattle over there.
That's the property, if you ever walk along Lambert and look behind the houses, you know, that's that flat parcel back there that.
Yeah. When I was a kid, the leases, lease, I guess they rented the farm from you.
Yes, they leased it back in the sixties.
We would go down there, catch crayfish and.
Yep.
And you would be proud owners, you would be very proud owners of Hobo Hollow.
Well, we call it.
Tramp Hollow. Tramp Hollow, there you go.
Politically, very incorrect.
Tramp Hollow.
Tramp Hollow, yep.
Wow.
Played army a lot of times. We played army.
Yeah, because it's that weird, we were outside the town.
It was an area in our neighborhood that never was mowed. And all the boy kids in the neighborhood played in it. They called it Grasshopper City. Because that's like, was full of little bugs that jumped around. And then they mowed it, and everybody was very sad.
What's twenty-three?
Twenty-three?
Let's go back. So, we're still talking about this eleven acre parcel. And that's going to be, you would like to donate that to the town? And then if we drill a well or get wells on there, you want the rights for the well, or for the water?
Well, I would, I would sell the rights to the town. I wouldn't use them.
Right, I understand, yeah, that's, I understand that.
But if the town does not explore and/or use them, you want to reserve the water rights for the future?
As far as the deed.
Yes.
Just in case down the road, you guys want to come back. I don't know what the cost is to do a water study. I have no idea.
Not a dollar and a half.
That's for sure.
So, what about, I'm sorry, you, I interrupted you.
So, that's all phase one. Now, where's phase two?
Well, that's phase two, the water portion.
Okay, it's still the same, same parcel. The donation is the first phase, and then the water rights is the second phase. Okay, but it's all, phase one and phase two are the eleven acres.
And they're not really connected, because you're not just doing phase one. It's phase one, you're donating with the condition of retaining the water rights.
Correct, but if you, if you don't, I mean, we donated, if you come back to me, to us twenty years later and say, we're interested in the water rights, there's a lot of water under there, you know, twenty years later, then we can negotiate that. Okay.
So, Mr. Snyder, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a slow study. So, I'm looking at the letter that you sent that has the three parcels delineated, one fifteen, one sixteen, and one thirty-three, give or take. The only, so you want all of these.
Yes.
Out of the plan?
The growth area. Yep, now, those parcels aren't on here.
Okay.
They'll be, they'll be back.
Yeah, there's, that little map is really hard to read. That guy.
Yeah. Now, this, this, this tax map has not been updated, so that's how, okay.
They're horrible.
So, that's where the house is.
Okay.
This is the area I'm talking about donating.
They want sixty-eight acres, and this is only eleven.
Yeah, this parcel right here is the sum of all three of those put together.
All right.
Yeah, now, this is an ag preservation already.
Okay.
So, that means this will be eligible because it's adjacent.
Because it's adjacent.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
And you can't get into those programs if you're in the growth area.
That is correct.
Yeah.
So, this one is ag preservation right now? Is that what you just said?
Yes, that parcel right there is ag preservation.
And this is the parcel that we're talking about right now, the sixty-eight acres?
Yeah, that, and that's actually divided in three.
Okay.
I'll just side of the room, understand.
So, it's on this map. That makes a lot more sense.
Actually, it sounds like phase one.
This is the sixty-eight acres that's total, all three parcels here, okay?
And which one did you say was already within ag pres?
Uh, this parcel right here. Parcel forty-one. Because right here are your tanks.
Right.
Those two little parcels there.
Okay, so this is where we were just.
This would be the donation.
Yes.
This area right here, we would keep.
So, this is where the house is, right?
Yeah, that's where the house is, right there.
There's sixty-eight.
It's total of all three of them put together.
And then?
All three.
So, that's the third parcel then?
Yeah. Right now, it's everything.
I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly where the town's various interests lie on all of that.
Of these is.
Let's just say that records keep, may not have been as good as it could have been.
The donation doesn't really need to come to us, the issue about that, it's the.
It's the removal of the growth.
That's really the only thing that you have any control over.
So, it's this area here, but you're saying not all of the sixty-eight.
Well, no, no, it would be everything. Because this, you know, even though it's not buildable, this is still in the growth area. This would have to be removed too.
That's where the three comes in.
Yeah. But now.
One, two, three, so we're talking about.
That area?
I don't think so.
Just this more or less, just.
So, can we link that to this?
This is sixty-eight acres, this is the ag preservation that it has, which is total here. And then this piece right here, this six acres, the third piece.
They never updated the tax.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the stream.
Yeah, that's that.
Well, there's a line, then, well, I guess that's right away from the. Right here.
Right.
Okay. This would be kept, but over here on this, this map, since this map is not updated.
The house is on Lambert, you can see this parcel.
This is already an ag preservation.
This one.
So, that's the parcel we're talking about to donate.
This is environment. That's why I asked if there's like wetlands and stuff, because it's all over.
Want to take out of the growth area. These together.
Years ago, they used to keep it ditched, and it was kept fairly dry.
This is actually all three parcels.
They used to ditch, you know, because it does land.
This is the town water tank right here.
Okay. Okay.
So, so Phil.
What's the proposal? Want to know what they're doing with the six acres?
You're referencing here, the fifteen, the sixteen, and the thirty-three.
Yes.
Are all comprised within this, right?
No, it doesn't show on this map, unfortunately. This is part of it too. Okay, the town, the town tank is over here. This, this is, this just encompasses the area in question that we would donate to you.
Okay, so, but there's three parcels.
Correct.
Over here. This is not one of the showing up.
It actually is part, yeah, it is part. Now it is. Right now, it's all.
Part of the three, part of the sixty.
Total sixty-eight acres. Yeah, now, that, you know, if this is all removed from the growth area, you know, this would be deeded separately. I don't know if, I think we'd consider that a subdivision.
Well, that's what I was just going to say. If, as a general rule in the county, if, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. The definition of subdivision excludes the division of a parcel for the purpose of conveying it to the government. So, you should not have to go through the county subdivision process. You should be able to just do that meets and bounds. Bob would probably know that better than I do.
Yeah.
But that's my recollection, unless that's changed relatively recently, and I don't think it has. So, you got to know the definition of subdivision to know if you're, if it's applicable or not. But it always excluded land that was just going to the government, any, any of the numbers of government entities, not just county. So, you shouldn't have to go through subdivision. You might, without having a map, might have to do some kind of lot line reconfigurations to make sure, like, the home place parcel isn't affected inadvertently or whatever. Because it is really difficult to tell.
For what, a survey?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, somebody can buy a boat on that one.
So, are you Kate Drew?
Yes, well.
Yeah, well, no.
This area is back where Buster used to live. This, well, the sheep farm.
Oh, yeah.
Now, that's, that's not part of.
No, no.
Because, see, it's shown that in the growth area.
I think that is in the growth area.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
That would still be, yes, we don't own that.
So, it would just be the, where the home, the home place is.
This would be this area and this little triangle here where it's green.
Yeah, that though.
Yeah.
And, and this.
Yeah, but it's not all of this.
It is.
No, that triangle.
Might be helpful going forward, even if it isn't a true survey, if we could, because this, this group is one, one group, but the legislative body is the one that's going to have to make the other decisions. And if they had, like, a map that sort of merged the information on these in a way that mere layman could understand it.
Yes, within the blue here. Well, yeah, yeah.
Here's this street, here's that street. Here's Buster's house, you know, you know where it is.
And then this, the orange is the, is also a boundary on.
I don't know, I don't know that that's possible.
The orange is a boundary on.
That's the six.
Point seven eight, that would be kept. That will be kept, yeah, which is basically the creek. Yeah, this, this area here.
You're keeping it, but you still want it out of the G A B?
Yeah. Okay, so that's this six acre.
That's still six, I think, yeah.
Because of the stream that goes.
Coming up to the house.
Makes sense.
Outside town.
Right. That stream comes from one end of this property.
Yeah, you don't want to be interrupting the.
That, that makes more sense to me now, too.
So, we're talking about coming out of here. And then, obviously, filing out here, but it's also some of this out here.
I know, that's an ag preservation.
So, it is then?
It's just this part.
This gets more formalized, right?
Oh, yeah, this will be way more formalized.
Does that exclude from any water rights?
Whole thing.
For your purpose.
These three.
Yes.
Are comprised of this area.
The whole thing.
Well, I think that may be.
The whole area, right now.
So, what I'm, what I'm hearing, Mr. Snyder, correct me if I'm wrong. Almost irrespective of.
You're very limited.
What goes forward with the water. These three are the parcels, these three accounts, these three parcels. Is what is within your purview to take out of the growth area boundary.
And does it make a difference taking them out, if it's, that they're zoned differently?
No.
No. Okay.
No, it just comes out, and that would enable you, irrespective, again, of what you do, or we do, or anybody does with the water, that would enable them to go into some of these state or local programs for preservation.
When they get one.
Yeah, well, I didn't, you notice I didn't say soon. I just said when. So, that's, that's really what, that's, not wanting to besmirch you. That's all that really, I mean, we want to know, and everybody wants to understand, but all that is within your jurisdiction currently is just the growth area boundary issue. We did this several years ago with part of the leased property.
Yeah, carrying it, yes.
Yeah, it's a while back. Thanks for reminding me how long I've been doing this.
Well, eleven point eight acres, I mean, that eleven acre parcel, I mean, I mean, we just thought that that would probably try to be a good fit. I mean, you already have a walking trail there, I think, anyway. Doing partial walking, not, not on that property.
Oh, okay.
Close by.
Yeah.
On property that you own.
To tie the town into Snyder Summit, yeah.
Yeah.
Comes up as the well.
Place for people to go walk and do whatever, yeah. And I'm not looking, I'm in a rush, I'm not looking for an answer anytime soon. This is just conceptual. You know, if you guys want to think on it.
Well, now's the time to be doing it, because we're in the middle of this master plan process.
That's why I talked to Neil.
Yeah.
I talked to Neil, that's what he said. I'll be more than, we'll be more than happy to come back and sit down and answer more questions or talk with you, or. I am curious, is he having comments from the county perspective?
So far, no.
And I can show you one, one of these, what we're talking about, if you got, you, you're okay with it? Okay, okay. You're on floor to Michelle.
No. Molasses in, what's, what's lower than molasses in January?
And if, one me too, I can get a blown-up map and bring it in again, and we can certainly talk about.
Instead of trying to piece all these together, if you can get.
It's a little confusing, because the maps don't all match.
We can do that, I mean, I would, I would like.
Ultimately, want to do that for the legislative body, one way or the other.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
I would want to ask, do you have a final drop-dead date when the plan is going to be adopted?
Our plan?
The Rock County Master Plan? No, we don't, we don't have a specific date yet, no, no, we don't.
So, it will be sometime this calendar year?
Yes. We hope ours is as well, yes.
So, I mean, that's what I can, that's what I can do for work, you know, my, my, my work would be to try and get you an updated letter on that. Come back, I will be able to come back in April, if I could maybe get on the agenda for May.
Sure. Yeah, we'll have to talk about that.
Yeah, when, our, our ordinary meeting is Memorial Day.
Yeah.
So.
Well, May, June.
Sometimes we move it, sometimes we skip it.
I'm going to propose something a little later for our meeting.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll work on getting something.
Around it.
And in the meantime, I think you have my contact information, or if you don't, you can email me, call me. You.
Would you?
I'm here for moral support.
Phil's information is on the bottom of.
Yeah, everything we need.
Yes.
Thanks.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
The next item I had on the agenda, so in this case, is a request to reduce the growth area boundary. Last month, or not last month, last meeting, we had a request to expand the growth area boundary. And as a prelude to that, the meeting before that, we had a presentation from, apparently Wayne, I think it was, about our water. And you, since you're in the business, you're in, in the field, you have a, definitely a role for us as we, as we look at this. And what, obviously, we need to, as a group, talk about these and decide about this, because we were not really moving in any direction to talk about changing the growth area boundary. But now, we have two, two items that are there. And in conjunction with that, I'm going to also roll with the next one, and that is this plan. What I'm proposing, and I'm going to leap ahead and then come back and fill in, that I have hard copies. Hopefully, as I hear it stop, I hope that we didn't run out of paper.
That it just blew up.
But this has been a long time.
Twice, twice.
And, um, the last time we sat in this, it was this kind of weather. We've had winter come through. And, um, so I finally took what we got back then and tried to make some sense out of it. And it was gonna carve it up a little bit and then bring it in everybody, but it was, frankly, I thought it was in a real mess. The formatting, uh, it was, it was kinda hard to read. I, I know we were chatting about the other world. So I've gone through it and put it into a consistent format, uh, made it so that it's readable. Uh, I do see some things that we talked about in this room, but I also, as I was rolling through this, saw that there were areas that we did discuss that were not having changes. So what I am proposing is I will give each of you a hard copy and I can also send you an electronic copy. But to go through this, looking at your notes, and we have, I'm proposing that our April meeting and our May meeting, we have two meetings and we just, just start at the beginning and roll through that and talk about what we gotta fix and correct. Because it's, it's, I hate to go to slog through that again. I could just go do it, but that'd be my view of the world. And I think that we need to have all of our eyes on this, cause I know, uh, I got all my post-its and I see some of them were kinda in there and some things we've had discussions about.
Notes everywhere.
Yeah, exactly. The good news is this document was a hundred and sixty pages. This one's only ninety. So there is a lot that has come out of it and, um.
That's good.
Now, all of the charts, um, we, we will chat about there. There's thirty that were in there and, um.
Notice he's sitting near the door so he can make a quick exit.
And, and, um, you haven't heard this as much, but it was primarily Price. But when we first started this process, when he was the representative for us, and we talked about it and it was the, and we, we don't get involved in that anymore. And we struggled with who was gonna help put this together and lead us on that, and we're still back. We've got sections in here that when you're talking about the charts and the housing units and stuff, the data's all from two thousand or the late nineties. So there's no value. So you're either gonna pull the section out or get updated numbers. And we'll, and I, I, we'll make something happen in the next month on that. But it's the rest of the topics, I think, cause most of this is verbiage in there, but a lot of it's been taken out. So I, I, I feel like some progress has been made. So, um, that, that's, that's sound as a plan. Cause I think if we split it up, that's, I just think that's, that's gonna cause another issue. And if we, our next meeting, if, unless something else comes up on the agenda, we spend two hours on this. And then in May, because it's Memorial Day, I was gonna propose that maybe we come up with another date in May. So we're looking at four hours. We're, heaven forbid, we could do like a Saturday morning. Yeah, I, I know. But, I don't know, but this, this is, we started this in twenty twenty.
It's gotta be done.
We gotta get it done in time.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Uh, if you know, we have a hard copy of
Where we stand right now.
Do you know if we have or if anybody has, and it doesn't have to be printed out, the progress, the changes, the drafts that have been done? Because those, if they haven't been kept, they haven't been kept. But one way or the other, the town really needs to have a record of this process as part of our records. And when we, um, had the meeting cancellations, I got to thinking about where exactly is the public record on this year's worth of meetings that we've had? So we have a, uh, we have a, a, a good solid draft now, but I'm just wondering, did, and I don't know, I don't, I don't generally get them.
I can tell you that what we got in August is a Word document that has notations of changes, corrections.
You have that, that exists somewhere. Okay.
We all have it actually.
All right. I, I don't have it, cause I'm not on the list.
But it, it is really, really difficult to work with that. Yeah. Got it, yes. Yeah, that, that does exist in many ways.
So we'll work with the, with the new one. I, I promise Dana that I won't spend a whole lot of, of legal time on it, but I'll, I'll cast eyes on it too, if you don't mind.
Okay, um, I just, I did not print one for you, but I'll print one and bring it up to you, cause I'm gonna have to eventually go up and see Javier.
Yeah, okay, yeah, cool. Yeah, I'm, I won't be doing anything with it the next day. Um, we can, we can work it out, you can leave it here. I'll be here Wednesday. Yeah, that's true.
Well, I can just go run another one off and go back here.
Whatever, I don't wanna inconvenience. It just occurs to, occurred to me that I wanted to make sure that someone, somewhere in the town actually had it and it wasn't just on a private computer somewhere.
Oh, okay, that's, yes. And that was my fear also when there was this disappearance. But it would, but what we have is not the iterations. And Kevin's taking care of all of it, is what I remember.
Oh, what did I get voted for?
So, yeah, we, we kinda went through it once. And then when we were, kinda where, cause I was asking what if we got, we need something back we can look at. Then we started slugging through it again, slogging through it. It's.
Plotting through it.
But it, and if anybody, you can go back and look in your email in August and I will gladly forward it to you if anybody wants to see it. But when you got all those little arrows pointing over and those bubbles, it is really difficult to work.
That's hard.
Anybody that I know, that's great for a three or four page document. That doesn't work for a hundred fifty page document. And then, and in fairness to Emily Ann, I'm sure the Word document she started with is a version much older cause it was done back in two thousand and seven initially. So that meant when she got it and she charged it, the formatting was all over the place and it.
We're underway again.
Yes, we're underway again. So, um, for sure, uh, like I said, when I, I'll walk over and don't anybody leave here so I can put a, give you a hard copy in your hand. But our April twenty eighth meeting, um, that's for sure, if we can go through there. And if you're not, and, and I know things happen, but if you're not able to make the meeting, then I'll, you can just get to me any main things that you, you have. Or I can meet one-on-one with you, but, uh, we'd like everybody to be, give their input. And then the May meeting is Memorial Day, and obviously we're not gonna meet on Memorial Day. Yeah, I, I certainly don't wanna take a, a, a Saturday or something, but I think we gotta get this done. Because the process is, once we have something.
We're not the end of the process.
Then there's, it goes to the, does it go to the council first?
I, I think it actually goes down to the state first. And various entities, I think it goes to the county, I think it goes to the state. Javier, you may remember, but it's been a long, long time since I did one of these, but I know Hampstead's, before it went to the council, it went to, I think M D P, and they reviewed it and said, put A where B is and C where D is and, you know, a bunch of that kinda stuff.
Did it have to go back to the state then with changes from?
I, I don't, I don't know. I can't answer that. But we need to clarify that. One way or the other, it's not like you're done with it and you take it to the printer. There's still several steps.
What that word is, I'm gonna take it and I'll be making all changes and do whatever else I've got. That's mine.
It's gonna be approved by lots of people. And then ultimately it is adopted by the electeds. Who will be a completely different crop of electeds by then. Well, not completely.
There are gonna be two groups that are gonna be looking and keeping an eye on us to see. And I feel like there's an obligation if they came to us and we need to respond back.
Absolutely.
To them, but they're gonna be looking at this and I don't know what next steps are if we don't go and do.
I'll find, I'll find out exactly what the next steps are. And I apologize for not knowing. I just haven't looked at that in a while.
It's okay. But I think, and it was definitely, I think we need, at our next meeting, we need that be, should come. That's part of, of this plan because I think throughout this document, we had a consistent theme. And I think what's being asked of us may go outside of that theme. And we will may, maybe need to change some of the tone of the comprehensive plan.
Well, the big ask is the Hoff property.
Exactly.
And this is.
This is.
Taken out areas that probably weren't gonna ever develop anywhere is, irrespective of the other, of the other issues, it's nothing compared to this up the hill.
Yes, and we, and I thank you, cause my head was trying to figure out what I missed because I'm seeing sixty something, but we're being shown eleven and said phase one is, is, is this. And the phase one is not the donation. Phase one is.
Is getting it out. And the donation doesn't match exactly the acreage on the letters and it, it can be resolved. It's, it's just a matter of straightening it out.
It doesn't stop it at all. It's just, it's just trying to clarify, it's why you have meetings. But the other one is the bigger issue and I think that, um, and really it, this body rests with us right now.
Well, it, it certainly starts with you. You will decide to include the Hoff property or not include the Hoff property. Then, of course, the electeds can agree with you or disagree with you. And they can either just disagree with you or they can send it back to you for further discussion, modification, whatever. So you are a long way away from the final decision on that. And we are looking at possibly three new people on the council. Well, two people on the council and a new mayor. Assuming anyone actually ever qualifies.
The big bucks to help.
Yep, that's why they make that big two grand or whatever the heck they make.
Two grand?
Didn't the mayor make like two grand? Not council members.
New one that you're printing out, does that have all the updated maps and charts?
Yeah, but, um, I don't know if it's a colored printer, so it's black. I'm gonna go, I realize that's sitting here, so I'm gonna go see if I can get them colored. But, um, and do not assume anything as you're looking in there because I see some things were changed, well, we were, you know, making more current and others weren't. And that's where I started really getting caught, cause I am a detailed person and my guy, like, your head will explode. But at least it's prettier now so that you'll be able to look at it consistently.
Do we have somebody else that's gonna come in and mark it up? I apologize if that was covered when I wasn't here.
No, you are.
Yeah, you are.
Oh, we're marking it up.
Yeah, what I'm gonna do, sorry, you, you, I'm sorry, you came in the door, Rose. I'm gonna give everybody a hard copy.
Okay.
And, um, you do with, however you want, but you're, that'll be your, your.
That's already been changed, cause this is the original.
Yes, it's, it's.
Kinda changed.
It is a readable version of what Emily Ann was putting against us. That's what you're gonna get. Do not assume everything we talked about got in there.
Back and forth compare.
I have the really old one. And I'm looking at it going, what is everybody talking about? Yeah, I don't even have that page.
We, we all have all kinda notes.
Don't tell me for any spelling changes, cause I'm not.
Also, the computers also will point some of those out. But, uh, and there are sec, there are good sized sections in there that talk about some of these charts. You know, census and what the towns like, you know, how we've grown. We, we're working off two thousand.
No, yeah.
Because at the time we did it, that we didn't have a two thousand and census, cause it hadn't been taken. So we're up ten times and twenty. Yes, sir.
Uh, the pie charts, didn't that replace, I don't know, I put them in there.
That was a concept that she had with pie charts.
Did that replace some of the, the tables?
I saw was the very first page. But, and see, it, it, pie charts can be done. Um, I'm not gonna forward that right now. All I decided was just, here's the tables that were in there before with the wording. Can we get updated numbers? Uh, cause we're now at twenty twenty-five. I know you sent me something with, where to find some census stuff.
Those maps, that group of maps, I think it had some of those pie charts that she, I guess, presented or.
Oh, yeah, I, I know there was another package you had. I didn't make.
Print those out, yeah. It had pie charts and I don't know whether that was supposed to replace some tables or.
I was trying to get back to the meeting.
That was the original idea.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. And that, and if you have an Excel sheet, it's pretty easy to make it into a pie chart. I can do that. But whoa, that's pretty fine.
Well, let's look at what you got and we can all review that and starting point.
And, and that's the reason we didn't meet last month, cause I got, I don't know. It was, I was thinking, bringing matter off the wall. Okay. So, um, four twenty-eight is our next meeting for sure. What about, uh, May? What, what's, anybody have a preference?
Now that I have only a phone calendar and I left it in the car.
Do we meet on Monday? Can we push it to Tuesday?
I can't do Tuesday.
Can't do Tuesday, okay.
Can we just move it up, um, earlier week?
Keep it on Monday and move it up a week?
Maybe the nineteenth?
That's probably council. Isn't that the council work session?
Yes. It's my thirty fifth wedding anniversary.
A is my forty first wedding anniversary and the sacrifice I have made.
Wow, congratulations.
Years, doesn't seem like a day over three hundred.
Oh, wow, forty? That's pretty good. I've been married going on thirty five. I say, we've had twenty eight great years and I get reminded I've been married for thirty five and I said, yeah.
The head with a stick.
Twenty eight of them have been great. They haven't all been good. They just, they haven't all been great.
My forty second anniversary would not put the same woman.
We just celebrated, I will be celebrating forty two when we sign.
My favorite wife.
That's always a good thing.
That was a movie, you know, with Irene Dunn.
My favorite wife.
My favorite wife.
The twentieth worked for, how about Tuesday, the twentieth?
And Cary Grant, I think. And Randolph Scott, I think. I'm not real clear on Randolph Scott.
I'm still laughing, I didn't even hit him in the head. I can't even get a calendar up.
And then the carnival is that week.
Oh, the week of the twentieth?
Yeah.
Oh, then that won't work either then.
Well, can push her back to the first of June, I suppose, first Monday of June.
We're gonna do two meetings that week since you got town council.
Yeah, that's not a big deal.
For those who are interested, that's the week of I U.
The what?
Uh, it's a holiday that I don't understand, but I can't figure out how to take it out of my calendar.
It's the end of Ramadan. So Monday, June second? Do we make that work?
Wait, Wednesday, June second?
No, Monday.
Okay, Monday.
Monday, June second.
And then the council is the fourth. I don't have my, my schedule is not that full.
Elections are, is that the first Tuesday of the month, right, of May, are, the elections to town?
Yes.
Yeah, that's May sixth.
No, that doesn't sound right.
It doesn't sound right.
May sixth is a Tuesday.
Thought it was the tenth or thirteenth or something.
I thought it was later. I, I have it in my calendar, which is across the screen.
I always thought it was a Tuesday and I, I know the elections are always the first Tuesday in November.
Like it was a double digit. It was a ten or thirteen or something.
Okay, then it'd be the thirteenth, it's the sixteenth.
Because it's usually then, one of the problems always when we changed it in the charter was it always called for people to start the new term and be inaugurated on the first Monday after the election or whatever, which always was Memorial Day. And so we changed that a long time ago.
All right, so be sure to vote because.
I don't think anybody's voting for mayor or any of the council seats.
Council slots.
Correct.
And just leave it at that.
What day are we looking at here? What's the?
I'm sorry?
What, in May is.
Yeah, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth?
Yeah.
Is the election.
Is the election.
Oh, yeah, that, that sounds more.
Neil's made it pretty clear that he's not.
He got some kind of award the other day. I saw him on Facebook getting an award for going away. So, uh.
I've been to a lot of farewell concerts. I don't know. I've been to quite a few. June second?
Yeah, I, I think we decided on June second, right?
He received a proclamation from the Carroll County. He received a proclamation from the Carroll County Commissioners and the proclamation from the Maryland Municipal League.
Saw it, it was on Facebook or something.
Is he moving or something? It was Neil Root Day.
Yeah, Neil was Neil Root.
Neil Root Day, that's right.
Did you all celebrate Neil Root Day?
I root it up.
I had cocktails.
I'm always up for that.
It's very, kind of a catch-all phrase. Oh, he's, he announced probably three months after he came back.
It really.
Nobody really believed him, but.
Or you get, yeah, this, this is a big deal this time.
Not as of.
But it's, 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 uh, it's a good likelihood that the other council members also, uh.
Kevin's up? Kevin's up?
Kevin, Will, Will Hall, and the mayor.
He isn't running.
Yes.
Did they get any candidates?
So, and one of them is saying.
I'm sorry, they didn't have any candidates.
And if he doesn't become mayor, that's three brand-new people.
Gonna be an interesting month in New Windsor.
It's, it's, it's a big deal. Carnival is the twentieth to the twenty-fourth, right? Starts Tuesday.
No parade.
No parade.
No parade.
What, uh, when did that happen?
We decide that at our meeting.
Wait, no.
It cost over four thousand dollars to put on the parade. And we didn't seem to be reaping any benefits from it, so there's no parade.
I buy, go up here and buy dogs, I go up here, that, that's, that's my.
You don't buy four thousand dollars worth of hot dogs?
Lot of Frankfurters for a grand.
Does that cover like the police and stuff?
Uh, yeah, overtime, um, pay for the bands.
Oh, they don't march for free?
They don't march for free.
Nobody rides for free.
Man.
What about the fire trucks?
Well, they give, they give cash, they give away, you know, prizes at the judges, but.
So I gotta go walk and go see my blue truck now. I look forward to that every year. Well, thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
Last, last year, 'cause this will be the last one.
You won't have a porch full then.
Yeah, well, I got, I have some.
We have a porch party and just like hang around, you know, watch the traffic.
Yeah. Livy used to have brandy parties, I have little kid parties, it's offensive, right?
Yeah, he might wanna reword that.
Already out there now on YouTube. All right, any other announcements?
I have a question about the agenda.
About, I'm sorry, the antenna?
No, the agenda, agenda.
Oh, okay.
Number four.
Oh, yes, 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 I, I jumped over that, didn't I? Ryan had told me he was going to, uh, he just, what, this changes at work he's not gonna be able to be part of this any longer, and I tried to get him to stay on at least to here with the Hoffs, and, and then what, but he's, he's, he's done. So we haven't seen him in a while, and we'll see him again. So we have a vacancy. And I did put something, I think he took it to the town council, or a suggestion. And so we, we can proceed that way, you think?
So we recall, we did the same thing that we did for soliciting when we had a vacant seat on the town council, right? That's what we pushed, we wanted to be able to solicit for candidates. We wanted to have an opportunity.
That was ever formalized, but I think it was what happened.
I did a letter from us saying this is what we were proposing.
A letter to the mayor?
Yeah, to the town council.
Yes, the mayor and council, yes.
So that is another step that will probably be done before a new mayor.
Cor, correct, and probably at this point, that's, that's probably okay.
I didn't mean that as a plus or minus, just a fact.
I don't know exactly, you, you know, the, the process. The old process was typically the mayor appointed somebody to the planning commission. We put in a position that we wanted to solicit for candidates, those that were interested, we could meet and talk with, and I believe it was make a recommendation
Yes.
to the mayor and who appoints.
Including posting it on the town.
Yeah, so that should be started, 'cause it'll take a little while.
Yeah.
So we have a meeting next week?
Council meeting is next Wednesday.
Do you want me to bring it up and say this is the process we want to follow, or do you want to push it forward to the council, the mayor? I'm happy to do it.
Well, I thought that we, that we already had a.
We did that, but they don't know that there's a vacancy.
That's the thing, they don't even know there's a vacancy, so. If that goes to Gary in the next day or two, it'll be on the agenda that he'll send out Friday, right?
Right, I'll get it, I can.
And then, you know, it can come up as part of the regular meeting next week to move it along.
I'll, I'll have Gary put it on the agenda, and then I'll speak to it at the council meeting.
Yeah, you go back, you go back, I go back farther.
Did you by any chance, Glenn, have a chance to see the Carroll, our last planning committee, planning commission meeting? 'Cause I, I, I know the Carroll Media Center sometime, or they'll show it, and then I think you can also do it on YouTube.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I have not, but I, I.
I think it would be good if you could look at that, so you can see what it is that they're proposing.
That the Hoff folks were here.
'Cause I, I, it would be helpful if you heard what they're requesting. You know, as we're looking at this, and then also, 'cause I know you were at the meeting when we had Wayne explain to us our utilities situation, or so.
They play on locally on the, I think it's channel twenty-three.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think, I think if you, if you do a search on YouTube, you know, you can bring, you should be able to just pull it up at your convenience.
How was the December meeting, right?
September thirty. Under the lights. Did I miss anything else, or I think I've?
No, I just was intrigued when I saw that listing, so.
Oh, I, I never mentioned that to you, huh? Yeah, that's been a while.
It was not a surprise.
Yeah. And I actually talked him into staying a couple of times, and then he's, it's, it's been a circle, plus he's got a couple little ones.
Yeah, work schedules are, are pesky work.
Work always gets in the way, but I also think he was with us, because that's something that, that, that company feels like you need to have involvement in the community, and that was, because he went to New York.
But then you can't 'cause of your work schedule, so.
Well, I mean, we used to meet at seven thirty because of my work schedule.
I like this much better, by the way.
By the way, I guess that's probably, it's not on the agenda, but is this still a reasonable time for everybody? I mean, is there suggestions to change, okay? How bad is it for you, Javier, coming? Perfect, okay, I like that, perfect. Gosh, okay. Any, any other thoughts, questions, announcements? I guess I could've been under the announcements category about Brian.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Make a motion with your own.
Motion from Glenn, second from Kevin, all those in favor of adjourning signify by aye. I just got it, we're almost out of here, let me go see if I can.
No, I don't wanna close the meeting.
I reproduced.
See how well you reproduced?
Yeah, that's right. Looks like a really nice fancy copy or so.